I'll order the regular meeting of the East Point City Council on Tuesday, September the seventeenth at seven P. M. Please rise for the invocation given by Sarah Lucido and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we go about the business of the people of East Point. We are grateful for the many blessings you have given us. Let us all use the gifts of our talents and treasures to make our community a better place. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to entertain, or please call the roll.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Here.
Counselperson Lucido?
Here.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Here.
Counselperson Owens?
Here.
Mayor Pixley?
Here. I'm going to accept a motion, please, to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Support.
Moving support. Please call the roll.
That was a support.
Moved.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes. And we'd like to start the first hearing of the public, and we have some people here tonight from the Macomb County Department of Health that would like to show you a very special thing. So I'm going to allow them three minutes for each person, which would be six minutes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor.
And then you're going to have to come up and talk in the microphone, but maybe we have a lot of people who would be willing to pass out these cards.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Bosch. I work for the Macomb County Health Department. Here with me is Jay Cutler, and we are here to tell you about a new resource that we have developed at the Health Department. It is a behavioral health services map. The business card that is going around right now has a URL code on the one side and a QR code to scan with your phone on the other. The, um, the map is phone and desktop friendly, so you can go ahead and check it out there. There are a range of different themes of services, going from psychology to medication drop-off sites to, um, what else is on there? Uh, different support groups, um, just a whole range of topics related to mental health and behavioral health services. So go ahead and give it a look, and we also welcome any feedback or questions that you may have as well. Um, the mayor, I believe, has seen it, and do you have any qu- any feedback about the map?
I think if you tell everybody in this room to take out their phones, because they all have their phones and they all look at them all night.
Yeah.
If you take out your phone and just take a picture of this barcode, it will pop up with all the services that are available throughout Macomb County. So it's really a godsend. Many of us on council get calls with people, and you think, well, they could use a referral to a social service or to any type of a drug assistance program or whatever. And this is really phenomenal. You'll be really shocked at how good it is and how effective it's been.
Thank you, Mayor.
They've done a great job, and I wanted to be sure that everybody on council in particular, but I think that anybody in the audience, I see a lot of people in the audience that can also probably use it. So it's a great tool.
Yeah. You can also search, there's a search bar in the top corner where you can search by your address or another location too, and it'll show you different locations near that site. So just play around with it. There's a lot of different things you can do with it. We just want to be able to help people access their services better. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Does anyone, oh yeah, does anyone have any questions about how it works or if you wanted to try it out now?
It's going to be a godsend to their police department as well, sir.
Can I just get a few more of the cards, please?
Of course.
Yeah, and if you think your organization, if you work or volunteer at a place where you can hand these out to people that may be of interest, send us an email on the back of the card. There is an email address as well as a phone number. The phone number's for the main line of the Health Department, but they'll know who to transfer it to if you tell them that you're looking for the health planning team. Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Becker. I'm an attorney with the primary offices in Macomb County. I handle court-appointed work, including arraignments for the city of East Point under the MIDC, Michigan Interstate Defense Commission. Funding unit for Thirty-Eighth District Court, City of East Point receives state grant funds to cover a portion of these costs, including but not limited to attorney fees. These funds are regulated under the grant and are required to be spent under the conditions of the grant. However, they are not. I, along with a dozen or so attorneys, many of who are here tonight, had their checks from the City of East Point cut without any legal authority retroactively for legal work that was already performed and previously agreed to and authorized by the court. These court cuts were done without any legal authority, prior knowledge of the court or its administration. Cuts were made to the checks that should have been paid with the regulated and controlled funds. When I contacted the court and its administration, they had no idea this was done. These actions usurped the authority of the court administration. What would have been a better way to handle this would have been to return these invoices to the administration and request that it be adjusted. Not that I think this is illegal, but it would have been at least follow the bureaucratic process. Normally, when there's an issue, anything with this nature, we take it to the court and they are a pleasure to deal with. The administration and staff does a ton of work for the city without a lot of resources, and they don't get the credit they deserve. So when you do actions that violate their authority, you are violating the normal way of handling issues and insulting the staff as well. That's not appropriate actions or behaviors of elected officials. City officials were notified of this illegal action at a meeting on eight twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen at City Hall. Randy Bloom, Finance Director, and Ryan Khan, interim City Manager, was present. At that meeting, Court Administrator Karen Hayduck and Jennifer Phillips from the State Court Administrator's Office told these city officials that this was an illegal action and needed to be rectified. Whereupon these city officials agreed. Now, I'm not sure if they just said that to placate these people or they later changed their mind, but then a response from the city, those same officials, one week later on nine thirteen, two thousand nineteen, was that the people that had their pay cut could come to the City Hall, have explained to them why this was done and how it was done, but they had no intention of refunding this money or refunding the cut funds. Not sure who's a great idea this was to retroactively cut these checks, but not only were they cut, but additional issues with those checks now exist. The checks for court-appointed councils normally delayed are normally delayed thirty to sixty days. We're used to that as attorneys. It's not right, but that's the way it is. These checks were cut on six thirty, two thousand nineteen, for invoices that were submitted in April and May of this year. They were mailed out on eight twenty, two thousand nineteen, four months later. I believe this was done so the city could report to the state of their reporting requirements were met, and therefore the state would release the next set of funds under this grant, because that was the grant deadline for submitting of the requirements. The city imputed this, imputed these checks in June and for April and May, but not distributed to late August. This creates several legal issues for the city. The city funding unit for the court is running fast and loose with this regulated money, and if you want to see an example of how the state handles that, ask Eric Smith and his issues. The people making these decisions are either ignorant to the law, incompetent, or fraudulent in their nature, or a combination of all three. I believe the city, through its actions of certain individuals, are exposing the city to potential state and federal civil criminal penalties. The additional legal ramifications with this, within the city, part of their reporting this income are just in dispersing these funds. For example, they are reporting to several state and federal entities that these funds are being paid and distributed to us on one date, four months prior to actually releasing it. This, this creates potential federal and state tax reporting issues and penalties. Not to the mention that the city was on notice since a minimum of eight twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, and on notice again tonight. Originally, I and several other attorneys brought this issue to the City Manager and the Finance Director and just said, bring us hold and we will leave this alone. Once again, I implore you to do that today. I'm putting the, the council on notice and the city on notice, if this is not corrected within fourteen days of, not just voted on, but checks received within fourteen days, I've been authorized by myself and several of the lawyers to file a federal lawsuit against the city of East Point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Christine Grant. I've been doing criminal defense, doing court-appointed work for twenty-five years. This is a calling. I don't expect to make a lot of money. I'm not ever going to be rich. No one who takes court appointments is. However, everyone has bills. We have bills that have been outstanding for four months. When they pay something to me for work I've done, not only are they cutting some of it, but on some things, they're taking a hundred percent back for the work I've done with no explanation. The funds come from the MIDC. These are matching grants. They're given to the city. I don't know who is playing fast and loose, but I know for sure that it is not a legal act. I don't expect to make a lot of money, but there's a set, a set amount that I've agreed to, but that you have agreed to pay. And I don't think it's fair, and we all know it's not ethical, nor is it legal, to not pay pursuant to that. Or to do what is the shell game. We're going to pay you, and then a month later, we're going to take it back. And that's what's being engaged here. Sometimes they're taking forty percent, and sometimes they're taking a hundred percent for the work that we've done. It's not fair. It's not right, and it's not legal. And I would implore you to fix this immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Dana Frears, and I'm also an attorney with my offices here in Macomb County, and I also do court-appointed work for the city of East Point. I'd like to start by saying that East Point is actually my favorite court to take court-appointed cases in. It's a fantastic court to practice in. Judge Gurge is wonderful. His staff is wonderful. No issues whatsoever there. I think one of the main reasons people are upset and here tonight is that no one let us know what was going on. Our checks were just cut with no explanation, no communication, and we still have not gotten that. I've reached out to Mr. Cotton. I've reached out to Mr. Bloom, and I have gotten no response. Um, I understand what happened with the rate originally being at eighty dollars, then increased to a hundred and fifty dollars. It's now back to eighty dollars. I understand that if I take arraignments in East Point going forward, my rate of pay is eighty dollars. I will just echo what, what my brother and sister counsel said and, and reiterate to the counsel that this is MIDC funds, state-generated grants that can only be used for counsel at first arraignment. It's not the city of East Point's money. It cannot be used for anything else. Like I said, I understand going forward, we're going to get the eighty dollars an hour, but for a period of time, we were told we would get a hundred and fifty dollars for the first hour and seventy-five dollars for each hour after that. I understand some people may not like that, but frankly, that's too bad. That's what we were told. We were contracted to provide a service for the city. We provided that service. We should be paid for that service. And if the argument is that our checks are going to be cut back to eighty dollars an hour, I can tell you that's not true. My checks have been cut by more than that. The city of East Point now owes me five hundred and eighty dollars based on the services that I provided. So, and I'll echo what Ms. Grant said, some, some checks were cut a hundred percent. So I'm not sure what the logic is, again, because there's been no communication. We don't know what's going on. All we know is we got a paycheck. Our checks were cut. Nothing's been relayed to us. Nothing's been done about it. I'm here tonight with everybody else to urge the city to fix this. We don't want to sue the city. Nobody wants to get into a big fight with everyone. We want you to do what you have to do and pay us for the services that we provided. What you've done is illegal. We hope that you correct that, pay us what we're owed, and everybody can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frears. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Erin Frears Cole. I am also an attorney that accepts court-appointed work in East Point, and I would just like to echo everything that has already been said. I would implore the council to do the right thing and pay us what we are owed, because that is what we agreed to. That was what the court agreed to. And essentially, what has amounted is a taking of our property without due process of law. And that is something that should not and cannot stand. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name's Scott Rabo. I'm a criminal defense attorney.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I apologize. Good effort.
Say your name first.
Good evening. My name's Scott Rabo. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I take a court appointments out of East Point as well. Um, with that being said, even your guy's initial prayer, I caught, it says, "The better to the city." I don't know what better of a public service there is than the line of work we're in. Um, not many people realize it throughout life, which they're very fortunate, but at the same token, once it impacts you or a family member, their opinion of, you know, our profession changes dra- dr- yeah, drastically. Um, with that being said, you know why we're here. It's pretty simple. Anytime I've ever signed my name to the ones that were previously the one amount, I just want to be ratified for, compensated. We're talking a few, a couple hundred bucks apiece. It's my understanding there's roughly twenty of us that are even on this list. Um, so we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars here. I mean, maybe max a thousand bucks apiece, like, and that's probably an exaggeration. Um, from this point forward, I get it, you know, the amount's on there, eighty bucks. I agree to that as well. Um, we're all passionate about our career, but it just offends me that I'm missing my daughter's soccer game right now because I'm pretty much chasing money from, you know, the local government over a service I provide and never complain about, and if anything, it benefits the city drastically. Um, I just want to be evened up with you guys so there's no issues in the future. That's simply it. Um, appreciate you guys' time. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? Please speak into the microphone. Let us know what your name is.
My name is Mike Schneider, resident of East Point and a member of Chapter One Fifty-four of Vietnam Veterans of America.
Don Sinclair, resident of East Point, also a member of Chapter One Fifty-four.
Uh, we're just here tonight to, to let everybody know that this Friday is National POW MIA Recognition Day, and this is throughout the country to remember those who have not come home. And, uh, and we were, we will be out at, we will be out at Resurrection Cemetery at two o'clock on Friday, and, uh, at six o'clock, we'll have our opening ceremony and our chapter stands guard twenty-four hours at that monument. We've done that for about thirty-three years. We used, we used to go out to Oakland Hills, but there's a monument now at Rese- Resurrection Cemetery, and we would encourage everybody in, uh, in Macomb County to come out and be part of that, uh, that service and stuff. And it's, it's our, it's our intention to do this until they all come home. We, we know that probably won't happen, but we're going to try until we can't do it anymore. There's still forty-eight from the city of, from the, uh, state of Michigan who are missing, and we have, I have handouts here, and they have names of all who, uh, who are still missing, if anybody would like one. We, we placed some here in City Hall and the library also, that, uh, and hopefully everybody has taken them, and we just want that known out there, that if you had family missing, you'd want them home too and stuff. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? In the back, please come forward.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Counsel, my name is Larry Edwards, uh, resident of East Point. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, kind of piggyback off of the last meeting that we had due to the, uh, adoption of the surges, uh, surges standard code of parliament procedures. Uh, uh, public is not really allowed to, uh, speak back in replyance to, uh, a response that was stated, and then the council respond, whoever respond to it, but, uh, public's not able to respond back, especially on record. Uh, in regard to the trees that I may mention on the last council meeting, uh, uh, of the maintenance of it and the necessity of the key upkeep of it, and for some reason, odd reason, I don't know how it got on, uh, the subject of, and the topic of money and, uh, how the city haven't had money and, and don't have money and haven't had grants and all this here. When I'm, was just basically speaking on the maintenance and the upkeep of the trimming of the trees of, of what's needed, you can't even walk on the sidewalks with the limbs hanging down so low. You can't park your car on the street because of the, of the, uh, limbs of the trees that's all going down towards the ground and what have you. So I don't know how that was miscrewed or how it came about, but I'm here to address that again and hope that it will be addressed again. I was more than glad to hear the reply at the time that it was stated, but, uh, for some reason, it seemed like we wasn't, uh, on the same page. And again, uh, the, uh, sign that was, uh, used to be, it's not any longer that I've noticed, and I've recently was that way, uh, yesterday, uh, of the sign regarding to, uh, please watch and be careful of the blind people in this neighborhood. I don't know if that was, if, uh, that was due to the construction of the work of building the medium there on Nine Mile and Grashit, or if it's been outdated and there's no long any blind folks in this area or what.
You have thirty seconds.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, but, uh, I would like for it to be addressed and what have you, at least, uh, to, to be able to know one way or the other and, uh, not just to go blank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Marissa Kalsar, and I'm an attorney, and I have worked at
the Thirty-Eighth District Court for the past four years, taking court-appointed clients. Just like my fellow attorneys, I'm also a victim. I'm a victim of theft. You stole from me. You stole from me, and you stole from these other attorneys here, and you also stole from attorneys that couldn't make it tonight. We work just like you do, and we expect to be paid, just like you do, but we did perform work, and unfortunately, you haven't paid us. It's a, it's a shame that the city of East Point's government would be so greedy and sit in such disregard for the responsibilities that these citizens have elected you to perform. Excuse me. It is my hope that you'll listen to our statements tonight and take action to correct your mistakes. I will stand with the other attorneys who have spoken before me, and I do have the same intentions to reap the benefits that you guys have by allowing us to perform in your city without paying us. And I'm asking you to pay us the money that you do owe us, because we did perform that work for you. You stole the money from us illegally, and I stand with the attorneys tonight, and I have the same intentions to sue you for what I am owed. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Please.
My name is Christine Timman.
Please speak directly into the microphone, Christine.
My name is Christine. Everybody say I'm a loudmouth, so I figured you heard me. I'm Christine Timman, and I need to caution council people. Everything you say as an elected official, make sure that it's correct. And the reason I'm saying this is because on last week, Councilman D'Amico spoke out of school when he declared that ranked voting is constitutional. It's not constitutional, but it's legal. There's a difference between the two. They can make anything legal. Then you gotta look and see, is that in the Constitution? No, it is not in the voting laws of the Constitution. It violates so many clauses. Your equal protection. Anybody supposed to know who you write the vote for? You can't distribute people's votes. But you know, they, they do stuff. You know what I'm saying? And, uh, so I just hope it don't backfire on him, because once you become an elected official, see, I could sue you right now for that, but I don't feel like it. I'm too tired. I got enough stuff to do without worrying with that. And Ms. Owen, you don't have to walk in the streets. I just walked all the way here from Nine Mile and Donald. Ain't a dog come at me. It was nice people, and I felt very, very hurt that she mentioned what she, what happened in the ghetto. This is not the ghetto. Those were beautiful streets, beautiful people. I didn't know where I was at. They showed me which street to go down to get here, and so I'm very, very upset about that, the same way as, uh, as I was upset about the ranked voting.
You have thirty seconds.
Right. So jaywalking still, you can't, you can't do jaywalking east la- uh, in East, East Point like you can't do it anywhere else. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? First hearing of the public is closed. Move on to the approval of the minutes, and the first one is the show cause hearing from August the twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the show cause hearing minutes from August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Support.
Moving support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Uh, the next one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from September the third, two thousand and nineteen.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September third, twenty nineteen.
Support.
Moving support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings tonight. We only have one item under unfinished business. It's the second reading in the adoption of ordinance eleven seventy-five to amend Chapter Thirty-eight, Article Three, sidewalks and, sidewalks and driveway approaches, section thirty-eight dash eighty-four dash A, maintenance of sidewalks and driveway approaches of the codified ordinances of the city of East Point. Any further discussion on this?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to give second reading to and adopt ordinance number one one seven five to amend, uh, Chapter Thirty-eight, Article Three, sidewalks and driveway approaches, section thirty-eight dash eighty-four A, maintenance of sidewalks and driveway approaches of the codified ordinances of the city of East Point.
Support.
We have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
And Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
So our city manager is on vacation tonight, but our assistant city manager is here for a minute, and he's going to talk about ranked choice voting.
Good evening, Mayor Pixley and City Council. Um, Thursday at two o'clock will be a big day for, um, the city of East Point. At that time, we are scheduled to go before the State of Michigan Board of Canvassers to have our universal RCV tabulator officially certified by the State of Michigan. Um, so our legal counsel, Angela Gabbel, will be flying in, as well as the United States Department of Justice will be there. Um, I will be there with my staff. Um, I welcome any of you guys to attend if you'd like. It is an official open meeting, um, so the, the general public is welcome to attend. It will be at, at Delta Township Hall at two P. M. Uh, beyond that, um, we've been posting numerous posts to raise awareness regarding ranked choice voting on Facebook, um, and we anticipate doing so between one and three times per week to try and raise as much awareness as possible. Uh, let's see, what else? And, uh, we do have an agenda item on this evening's agenda regarding the hiring of Ms. Grace Ramsey. Uh, she formerly worked for Fair Vote, um, so she would be East Point's, I'm calling her our voter education consultant. She does a great job at attending public meetings and kind of leading the discussion and dialogue, and I, I do strongly encourage, um, City Council to approve that agenda item. Other than that, I am all set. Thank you.
So item two is a presentation from Tyler Berta. And Tyler is the Vice President of Expert Technology Services on, uh, information technology and ransomware protection. This was requested by counsel.
Good morning, or good morning, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, basically, we just have an update here, uh, since we've signed the contract with the city to provide IT services. Uh, we want to give you an update on the status of the whole system, where we're at, and, uh, what the city has in place for ransomware and what the city has in place for ransomware and malware protection to make sure that we're safe. This is a good question that council's presenting, so I'm happy to see that you're asking it because far too often it is not asked. These things should be checked, and I believe all administrations should be aware of what they have in place to protect their systems. So, thank you for asking the question. Currently, we have approximately one hundred and twenty-four user workstations in the city. Seventeen of those we've had to replace for failure since we started the contract with the city. Two of the workstations are, are newer within the last two years. Nineteen are from two thousand and sixteen, and eighty-four of those workstations are from two thousand and fifteen or older. That's just kind of an overview. We have an, an item later regarding some updates, purchase of updates for those. Our servers, we have four main servers, two of which are five years old, one of them is seven years old, and the other is actually fifteen years old this month. So we are looking to replace those. Also, we have that in the capital improvement plan that we've worked, put together, and we have given to Mr. Fairbrother for approval and further discussion. The server that does all of the operations for the water meter reading, which we know is important to the city, that has passed its life expectancy back in October of last year. Council did approve the purchase of a new server. Unfortunately, the vendor never got that server to us, so that process has gone through. We found out that it was never shipped here, and they have issued a credit memo for that. I believe that Mr. Bloom has that credit memo, and that's been resolved. We're looking at further options for the upgrade, possibly doing something cloud-based or another server. In our capital improvement plan, we do have a proposal to replace all of the servers in the city with a redundant system that would be one hosted here, one hosted at the police department. That would give us a lighter system, more simplified than what's here now with the four servers, and that would give us redundancy. We'll back both systems up, back and forth, so that in the event that one system or the other had a problem, we would have full backup from either side and City Hall, or the police department could operate independently in the event that we had a problem with the network between the two. As far as BSNA is concerned, we recommend going with BSNA's recommended requirements for their server, and that would be addressed at a different time with a different bid on its own. We've had enough issues with performance and its requirements that we feel they're best to recommend what we should do with that. So when that time comes, we will work with BSNA to put together those recommendations and bring that to council. In the city's network, which is obviously your interconnect between all your computers to the main servers and in between the buildings. The building-to-building connection is in good working order. The speed is good, so that's good news. Our main internet speed is good. I've had no complaints. Each building infrastructure, with the exception of City Hall, does need some attention. There have been two emergency call-outs due to failed equipment, one at the fire department, one at police department. Our company, Expert Technology Services, has provided loner equipment in those two scenarios to get those buildings back up and running. Those were failed network switches. They are well over their usable life. They were last sold in two thousand and ten, so they are due for replacement. Those two loner switches that we installed are in there today servicing those two buildings, so we are looking to get that item bumped up sooner than later to get that equipment replaced, so we don't have any further failures or late-night call-outs, because this stuff never breaks at two in the afternoon. It's always two in the morning. Let's see, what else do we have here? So when we dig into the ransomware, you'll have to forgive me on some things being vague. It would be ignorant for me to give you in a public forum all the details of what we use to protect the infrastructure. If anyone would like to know more details privately, I'd be happy to disclose some of that information. Some of you may not really care once you hear this part of it. You know, the vendors and things like that may not be important to you. All of our servers are now backed up on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis, and that information is retained for as long as storage will allow. We say that because that generally exceeds far over anything we would need, usually at least a year. We've never had to restore anybody's data from that far away. It's normally less than a week, but the data is there in the event that it's needed. If we have the space to keep it, why wouldn't we keep it, just in case? The storage is standalone, and it was purchased under emergency circumstances to replace a failed drive, and at the time that we purchased that, we were able to upgrade it at the same time, which gave us some extra capacity to get those servers backed up on a regular basis, so the data is safe. That also allowed us to institute some redundancy as far as all the file shares that are in the city, so all of your data that we use on a day-to-day basis, all that stuff is now redundant and accessible from more than one location. So if a server does have a problem or is down for updates, the data is still accessible. Off-site backup is part of that dual system redundancy that we're looking at in the capital improvement plan, so that, right now, the data is backed up here on a separate device, but with approval, when we go into capital improvement plan, we will have off-site backup The city's firewall, which is obviously the main border device that separates the city's internal network from everything outside, that is a high-quality, next-generation firewall. It has built-in intrusion detection, antivirus, and malware inspection. It's in good working order. There's no urgency to replace or update that. The only thing would be to maintain the service agreements on it, which they are occurring. So that is good news. The number-one device is a good current device. Email protection is also a good cloud service that protects email. It has real-time spam filtering and antivirus, malware detection, and it has proven results. We check the logs routinely, and about fifty percent of the messages that come in are rejected as malware. That is where most of your ransomware would come from, and the system does a very good job at mitigating that. Antivirus, we have about sixty percent through the city. We've upgraded the workstations to a newer managed antivirus, which has some additional features and intrusion detection and logging, notifies us real-time if there is a software downloaded that is known as malicious or that could be ransomware. It obviously isolates that, but then notifies us who downloaded it, what machine, and things like that, so we can inspect that machine and make sure there's nothing else on it or possibly educate the user, because ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, these things are not done intentionally. It's just a mistake, and that is, the intention of the hackers is to provide you with something that you think is safe, and you mistakenly download something that is not. That antivirus also performs a virtualization task, so if something is executed that is not recognized by the antivirus, but is not deemed as malicious, if it's deemed as unknown essentially, kind of gray, then it virtualizes that instance. So that program, when it executes, cannot access any other files on that PC or the network while it runs, and that gives the user a chance to see if that's a correct program, and it also notifies us when one of those programs are run. So we get flagged with it, we can see what it is, and we can check to find out. A lot of things get flagged as unknown because new software comes out, so ninety-five percent of the time, those unknowns are safe software, but it's good just to safety net to review We are routinely applying patches to all of the workstations and servers in the city. That just means your Windows updates, software updates, make sure everything is up to date. Those patches come out generally for security patches. Sometimes they're feature releases, but usually those things are for security, and that is probably the number-three way that ransomware or viruses get in, is through known security vulnerabilities. So we go through and we monitor those workstations, and we make sure that they're up to date, and we are actually implementing a schedule to get everybody on the same path. Right now, it's just kind of as needed. We're going through, and it's more of a manual process, and hopefully, by the end of October, we'll have that automated, so that we just get a report back that shows us which workstations were updated and their current status, if they have any pending updates, and that's something that we can put in our report that we provide to city administration also. User protection, we are requiring users to reset passwords every ninety days, and we are increasing some complexity requirements. For users who don't routinely log into systems, who don't work here at City Hall or at one of the buildings where they would log into a computer, they also have an account that's for their email. That does not present you with a password reset. So we are looking at the option of integrating two-factor authentication, so when you log into your email remotely, it pops up a message on your phone or some other device that says, "Are you logging in?", and you can hit approve. That way, someone from somewhere else can't get your password and log in and access your email, and if they have your account information, of course, they can find out more information about the city also. So that's something we're looking at for added security for people who are email-only Are there any questions about what we have implemented or future plans or anything?
Anyone?
No, all sounds good.
I'm wondering if maybe you could summarize your report and provide it to each of the council members.
Yes, I will. I started to put that together, but it was a little difficult to leave out the key information that should not be in a public document, just for, you know, safety reasons, so.
Agreed with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very complete report.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll go back to our substitute city manager, who is our finance director, Mr. Block.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. First of all, the interim city manager left me no instructions to report anything to you, so nothing from the city manager. As finance director, the auditors will be here Monday, September thirtieth. They will be contacting the mayor and two councilpeople. They never tell me who because it's supposed to be a secret, but just be aware that two of you will be receiving emails or phone calls, and please respond. They need to speak with you either before or during the audit, so be aware of that. And then the other topic, it was the hot topic at the hearing of the public, the court-appointed attorneys. As you, if you read your emails, you saw a copy of a letter that went out yesterday along with some information on that. For the public, the, you heard MIDC, that is the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, and that was developed by state statute to, it set up an organization that is responsible for paying for court-appointed attorney activities. The city is in receipt of a grant from the State of Michigan and then disperses those grant funds to the attorneys as they perform the services. This was a particular, let's just say it was unique in how this developed. It was about a year and a half in the making where we got to the point of actually signing the contract last, or this February. It was actually signed on February fifth. At the time the contract was signed, it was believed that the grant took effect on that date. As we proceeded into the process, we were informed that it was actually retroactive to October first. This then led to an issue where the court had been paying court-appointed attorneys, let's go back. It started October first of two thousand and eighteen. So any court-appointed attorney work performed on that day or later fell under the grant rules. The city had been paying based on the court documents or the court payment request, and it was a hundred and fifty dollars an hour and seventy, or one fifty for the first hour, seventy-five for the second hour, or any hour thereafter. We worked with the folks at MIDC to try to get them to authorize the higher payment from October first till the contract was signed. They would not allow that. Basically, we were stuck with eighty dollars an hour because that was what was in the budget, and that was approved by the commission. And for the folks out in the public, nobody here on council is responsible for any of the paybacks or takebacks, whatever you want to call it. That is based upon meetings between myself, the city manager, and the folks from MIDC. It did involve the corp administrator, and we had an individual from the state court administrator's office down here for that particular meeting. I am unfortunately bound by the rules of the grant, which prohibit a payment in excess of eighty dollars an hour. The reason that the reduction, or the, well, we'll call it a reduction, in pay happened on the August twentieth check is that was the first payable period after the meeting with the MIDC, and it had, there was a lot of comments that were inaccurate, let's just say, at the hearing of the public. These issues came about due to the reporting that had to go on. We were required to report on a quarterly basis. We tried everything we could to keep it at the one fifty and the seventy-five that had been originally been paid, but I cannot pay more than the grant authorizes, plain and simple. The state will not allow it. We are paying at eighty dollars an hour regardless of what the form says, because that's all I am allowed to do. One thing I would point out to any of the court-appointed attorneys, the letter will be showing up in the mail soon, but one item is, any work that is performed by September thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen, it has to be remitted to the court administrator for payment by October second, because I have to get the checks cut in time to report to the state by October fifteenth. If you remit it late, I am not allowed under the grant rules to make a payment, so be aware of that. This has nothing to do with city money. It has nothing to do with city policy. It is state money, it is grant money, and it is grant rules. So the, the letter goes into further information on that, but that's where the bind that I am in on this particular topic.
Could you clarify the contract that you're referring to that was signed on February fifth?
That was the agreement between the City of East Point and the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission that basically said we were participating in the grant and that we would administer it.
Okay.
And that's when they then started sending us the funds to pay for the, the court-appointed attorney expenses.
I think this would warrant a closed session at the end of the meeting.
I agree.
So if you don't mind, I'll, I'll motion to add a closed session for attorney-client privileged communication as be in closed session.
Support.
I, I apologize if I missed it. I know that there was a letter. Was that from Rich to us?
No, it was from myself to the attorneys, and then I sent a copy to council. It was an email. It went, the email went out yesterday.
Did we get any communications on this issue from Mr. Albright?
No.
We would have to, we need a communication to go into closed session.
Well, threatened litigation is a valid reason to go into closed session.
What is it?
Threatened litigation at the hearing of the public.
Has to be pending litigation.
Oh, pending.
Yeah, threat of litigation.
I thought that's what you just said.
That's why I clarified.
Oh.
No litigation has been filed.
Madam Mayor, I believe that we could still go into closed session for attorney-client privileged communication.
Okay.
In light of the statements made during the hearing of the public, I think that that would be appropriate.
All right. Do you want to make that motion?
No, I'm, I'm gonna vote no, because I think unless we have a writing in hand, I don't think we should go into closed session over this, but that's just my, my personal belief on that.
Did you want to make the motion?
We could ask, we could ask Mr. Albright to review the situation and give us his legal opinion on it. Correct, without going into closed session.
Do you have all the details to review it tonight? Or would you prefer to do that at the next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I would prefer to do that at the next meeting, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, there was a motion support. I don't know if that's still on the table.
You want to do a roll call? Please, the motion was made by D'Amico, supported by Owens.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Lassito?
No.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
No.
And Mayor Pixley?
No.
Anything else from the finance director?
Nope.
Well, let's move on to our city attorney, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Several items. The first, our offices in receipt of all of the hearing transcripts from the previous two meetings where show cause hearings were conducted related to the dangerous filling hearings. Those transcripts have been forwarded to each of the homeowners with the council's decision on each of those. I worked and completed all of the revisions made to the proposed medical marijuana facilities ordinance that has been forwarded to city administration, and I confirmed with Ms. Van Heron earlier today that a copy of that proposed ordinance has been forwarded to all of the planning commission members, and I believe a hard copy is also available here at City Hall in the event anyone wants to review that. Over the weekend as well, I worked on some possible changes to the city's nuisance ordinances and municipal civil infraction ordinances related to odors and smells related to marijuana. With regard to item F under new business, the contract with Ms. Ramsey that Mr. Fairbrother discussed during his report section, Ms. Ramsey has approved that contract. I did receive confirmation of that yesterday, so she has already signed the contract. That is up for council's consideration this evening. Myself and Mr. Fairbrother and attorney- Myself and Mr. Fairbrother and Attorney Angela Goble are scheduled to have a telephone conference this Friday at noon with Grace Wachlerowitz from Minneapolis to discuss the Minneapolis level of assistance with regard to ranked choice voting. That telephone conference is scheduled to begin at noon. And finally, Attorney Goble has also requested that I attend the meeting in Delta Township with regard to the State Board of Canvassers, so I will also be in attendance at that meeting as well. I know Mr. Fairbrother indicated that he will be there. I believe some other, other members from staff will also be there, but I'll be in attendance as well. That's all I have. Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's all?
That's it.
Anyone have any questions? All right, let's move on to new business, and we'll start with approval of the contract for various construction and janitorial supplies. Do we have a motion?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so my first question is, for this contract, would it be including services, or would this be for just supplies?
I do believe that this is just a commodities contract, and there are no service components.
Because in the, in the contract, it sounded like there would be, it would be possibly for services also. Project management services and design, planning, organizing, scheduling, managing all stages of a project, providing and managing qualified contractors.
It may be in the contract. The contract is quite extensive through the state of Michigan MIDEL program, but I do not believe that Mr. Abraham was planning on using those services. He's more interested in using this contract to be able to procure one-off items that you may be able to get from a store such as Home Depot in a one-stop-shop fashion so that he doesn't have to go around and price shop, you know, every time he wants to buy a light bulb.
I just have a problem with some of, some of this, and some of the examples that were presented. Because what are you gonna do? Every time you have a broken pipe, you want to go over to Home Depot. The nearest Home Depot is where? So you're gonna have to go over there instead of just going down the street to Daroni and getting a little supply.
So, I mean, the way our procurement ordinance reads right now is that technically, even for a small item under $5,000, we're supposed to have multiple quotes for it. So Mr. Abraham is trying to be proactive and have the board...
And I can see where he wants to order a multiple supply, but when you're out there and you're digging in a hole and you don't have all of the supplies and you just need something right away, you're gonna have to go to Bill, to Home Depot. Is that right, according to this contract?
Home Depot will be one of the options, then, yes.
Say we, say we didn't approve this right now, do we still get the same rate at Home Depot, or this is, you have to... Yeah, go ahead.
The way the contract works is, based on your level of spend, it will affect your rebate check. So I do believe that under $10,000 per year, the rebate check is very minimal. Between 10,000 and, I believe it's 20,000, it's 1%, and then it increases by percent over that, up to, I believe, 5%. So it's really, it's a rebate.
So at least 10%, yeah, at least 10,000 to 25,000, 1% rebate.
Yes.
So we're talking about maybe 1% if 10 of the 15s even at Home Depot. I think this is personally just too micromanaging, and we just do what we need to without having to approve something like this, especially if we're only spending 15 grand a year for this sort of thing.
So is council okay if Mr. Abraham were to just go and procure, you know, a small dollar item from the, kind of the closest big box retailer, or even an East Point retailer, if, if it's acceptable? All, all, all we're trying to avoid is having to price shop for very small dollar items.
I, I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't know that price shopping for every single item is necessary, but certainly administration can function without coming to us for especially anything under $5,000. I do think I agree with other council members up here. I, I'm not sure I see the necessity for a contract like this, especially if it means we're going to go to just one big store instead of possibly going to other local sources when, when that's possible. So I guess I'm not sure I see the issue that this would solve.
I, I agree. I think that, I mean, definitely I'd much rather try to keep everything local, like I had mentioned in a previous email. But I do understand some things may not be available locally, and I don't mind going to Home Depot then, but I don't think that we need to have a contract.
And we'll save more than the 1% by going to Daroni's instead of Home Depot, like the mayor said.
I mean, the 1% would cover the gas to get there, so.
I think that you could do some negotiation with Dave Daroni as well to see whether you could get some reduction in the prices to equal the prices that you would get at Home Depot.
Yeah, I'm, Mayor, that's definitely possible. The, the issue comes in being that Home Depot has, you know, anywhere from 30,000 to 50,000 SKUs in their store, whereas Daroni's probably has all of a couple thousand. So they just, it's a lot...
Have you been in Daroni's?
I, I've been in other True Values.
Have you been in Daroni's?
I have not been in Daroni's specifically.
I can tell you, they have a lot more screws.
And one, one more, one more thing, and I, if, if there was something that was needed right away, I, I'm not saying that we can't go to Home Depot to purchase the item if Daroni's wouldn't, didn't, let's say, didn't have it. If it was something, I, I know Daroni's deals with a lot of different distributors or other even local hardware stores. They'd probably be able to order something if it wasn't needed right away, so I know they might actually have it on hand. That is still always an option. But yeah, like I said, I just don't think we need to have a contract to limit us to one place.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? We don't need a motion on this to...
I think we just let the item die.
Okay, then let's move on to sidewalk and driveway approach notice as per section 38-79.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to declare the necessity for and direct the construction repair and reconstruction of any sidewalk or driveway approach in any street in front of or adjoining private property as required by section 38-79 of the city ordinance, and authorize the city manager to give notice by November 1st, 2019.
Support.
Move to support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
And counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Next item is the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with Comcast of Taylor LLC.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with Comcast of Taylor LLC and authorize the mayor to execute, execute all necessary documents.
Do we have support? Is that a support, Michael?
Support, yes.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
So our next item is the award of a quote for a new sound system for a memorial field. Mr. Fairbrother, I'm a little bit confused on this because I thought you said that Able Electronics had a federal. Did you go back and check that and...
Yes, Madam Mayor. We did research that, and although Able Electronics does have a federal GSA contract, they are not willing to give us GSA pricing for the purpose of this contract.
So what prices do we have? Do we have their...
So we have a one-quote bid, I would call it.
So council, you're as aware as I am that this speaker system, sound system for a memorial park has been going on for four years minimum, and I was a little bit concerned when all of a sudden I was shown this where they had gone out and searched for prices in April. I don't know where the information was, but here we are. We have homecoming coming up again, and we have no speaker system. And Able has agreed that they would get the speaker system in if we approved it tonight so that it, they will have a homecoming game with the speaker system to announce their homecoming people. And I said, you know, we need to bring this to council tonight and see what council agrees, because we, I don't think you're gonna get any better prices than what you have, but we need to consider it.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just to let council know that this was discussed at the last parks meeting, and parks did go ahead with making the recommendation that council approve this. They did review it with Mr. Marucci, who is the head of our parks, and they agreed that we should approve it.
Yeah, it's definitely, I'd agree, Madam Mayor. It's frustrating that April, it's been quite a while, but I completely agree with...
It's very frustrating, and then when I found this thing from April and May, and we could have gone out and got another bid or whatever, but I just don't have the heart to go over to a homecoming game and have, not be able to hear who the king and queen and everybody else is.
I just do want to make sure we are absolutely sure then that what we're installing, you'll hear across on the visitor's side even, right? So we're not gonna install something that's like, works halfway.
I'd like to, I'd like to...
It looks like it on the, on the diagram, but I just feel like I had to ask.
Put a camera up on top of the speakers and say, "We're watching you. Do not take..." All right, so I want to entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the quotation from Able Electronics for the purchase of the sound system to be installed at Memorial Field football field, Memorial Park football field in the amount of $11,327, plus contingency in the amount of 10% or $1,327 for a maximum total expenditure of $12,654 as an emergency, and authorize any extreme measures to have the equipment installed and operational by the homecoming activities on October 4th.
Support.
I could, oh, hold on, I'm sorry. I think that, is this the right... Okay, no, that's, I... No, it's right, okay. I wanted to make sure the math was right. I was thinking in my head that the math was right. Huh? Yes.
Oh, the math, oh, okay.
Okay.
So we have motion support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
And counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
And Linda, I will be in to sign that PO at 8:00 AM tomorrow. All right, our next item is initial discussion of a policy for city council member attendance of training opportunities and conferences. So who would like to discuss this?
I could, I mean, I could tell you at least my initial thoughts. So I checked Mr., or asked Mr. Blum today to confirm the amount that we have allocated from this budget towards educational expenses, and it's $7,725 for this fiscal year. So I would, I think there are two things. I think first, I would suggest just capping that by person and saying of that 7,725, 1,500 for each of the four council members and 1,725 for the mayor, because there are some additional conferences the mayor gets invited to, and the difference there is only $225 for the year. And I would probably also propose that, that only be prior, only be approved for trips related to MML, or I don't know how you want to define it. I define with just saying MML, and any out-of-state or other organizational trips would be brought to council for approval.
Well, the only thing is, is I would either MML, or if it was...
Sem, oh.
Other things related to council.
Other, or, yeah, because I was even thinking of like trainings, like I believe Ms. Owens took the planning commission, the planning training last year. Like, I think that is something that even not being on the planning commission is beneficial. So like trainings like that, I think, would also be acceptable to use that money for.
I went to the Clinton River Watershed Council's annual meeting, and it was like 40 bucks.
Well, and, and there are mayor's meetings, and there are other council meetings as well. We have MML beginning and advanced up in Frankhamouth, and then we have the other things, but I...
I think as long as we split the money up so we, and then we can make the decision on what we think is in the best interest way to spend the money. Whether, I mean, I think we all agree that MML is probably the most important thing, so I think that would be fine to find it this, that way, just splitting it, not giving the specifics on what it can be used for.
Okay.
I think it's definitely the easiest way, and then residents can ask if they'd like to about any...
Right.
Anything that we go for training.
At some point in time, we probably need to establish a policy, and that's long overdue. We've talked about it at a council meeting before, but when decisions have been made, there's not been a policy for a city manager to go back and review. So we need to come up with a policy, and I think it's the beginning of it, when you say, whatever the budget is divided by five or whatever you, you came up with is, is a good formula, but I think we need to do that. So maybe, since you've done all that research, you could do it for the next council.
You can draft a policy for us. It's a good idea.
I need to just not say anything. I get homework when I talk.
All you gotta do is call MML and ask them for one, and they'll send you one.
Yeah, I mean, in terms, I guess, since this is initial discussion, just agreeing on sort of the even split, or like I said, just a slightly more...
Well, yeah, I think it's important to have those discussions now if you're gonna write a policy, so you know what to put in it.
And there are a lot of, there are a lot of out-of-state conferences that come up that relate either to council performance or, or mayor, and some of them are really good, but...
Well, I think they...
Taxpayers really don't want to pay for you to go out of state. Every single out-of-state conference I've gone to, I've paid myself, because I think there are adequate numbers of conferences within the state that are really totally applicable to either your role as a city councilperson or as mayor, and you have to conform to that rethink.
I, I think my, I know I mentioned the out-of-state thing, but my, I, I just think there should be some parameters that make sure that it's related to city business of some sort.
So, so that means that Mayor Protem Kleinfelt is gonna help with the initial policy development for city council attendance of training.
I'll do, I'll do a little bit of research.
And that means also that all of council has to give him some ideas about where you want to go and what you want to do with that.
Well...
We, we could also, well, I'm happy to do it, but if we would like Randy to follow up on it too, that would be fine by me.
No, I, I agree.
You mean, you want me to tell Ryan Cotton to get working on it?
Yes.
Well, since the gen, it was put on an agenda by me, the reason it was put on an agenda is because I think we lack a lot of training and a lot of different things, like, for instance, the medical marijuana and things like that. There were free training down there, and I think we, you know, other cities go out of town and get training and things like that to better their city. It shouldn't be a cap on, you know, as far as learning. And so I think we don't, I know a lot of, you know, council can't go to a lot of these trainings, and me and Ms. Lucido are probably open a little bit more, and predominantly, I go to a lot of the trainings. And so it's gonna be different things, different policies that come up, more than MML and SimCOG and different things that affect our city, and we might have to go out of state to go training. I mean, other people come out of state to train us, while we can go there to learn about what they need to do for our city, so... And it's a lot of, out of, you know, it's a training that I went out of town and paid for my hotel and my, you know, my flight there, but the...
I'm not disagreeing necessarily that maybe sometimes out-of-state things may come, come up, but I guess the, the thing is, is right now is, I think splitting, making sure the money's split. So come the end of the fiscal year, in April, if MML is doing something and one of us wants to go to it, and we only went to one of their conferences this year, I think we should have the ability to do so. We are working under a budget, so I feel like if that happens, we still have to stay in the parameters of our budget because we approved that budget in June, and so moving forward, I think we need to limit that because we don't want to be, have no money left in the budget come December or January. So I think limiting it per person to make sure, if we have something in the future that we want to go to, we can, you know, ration that, those funds to make sure that they're available. If you want to increase the amount per person, I think that's something that we would have to discuss in next year's budget.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's move on to our next item, which is the approval of the purchase, or... All right, let's move on to our next item, which is the approval of the purchase, or approval of the community voter education consultant for ranked choice voting implementation. So, Mr. Fairbrother, did I hear you say that the contract's already been signed?
Um, the contract was signed by Ms., what's her name?
Ramsey.
By Ms. Ramsey. We have not technically agreed to the contract yet. So, I have not signed it. No one on behalf of the city has signed it yet.
There are a couple of things in here that I was a little bit concerned about.
Okay.
Number one, her ability to hire and train additional staff?
Mm-hmm. She feels it is necessary to have somebody working on, on the ground here to organize mostly the 501(c)(3) nonprofits that have all been volunteering, well, who claim they will be volunteering to go canvass the communities, specifically the kind of the lower-income communities of East Point. And per our MOU, we have a specific directive to engage in specific types of voter outreach.
So, do we have an obligation to hire and train additional people to allow somebody else to do that? Is that in the MOU?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. We don't have an obligation, but if we don't have the necessary staff here at City Hall to fulfill those obligations, then I think that's where this request is coming from, to allow other people, rather than hiring actual part-time employees here at the city, to make sure that there is the proper staffing in order to make sure that everything goes through without any issues up through the November election.
I, it's been a while since I've looked at the MOU. I was under the impression that it had language something like, "Make reasonable effort," or "Make some sort of efforts to educate." Mr. Fairbrother, you said something that I wasn't sure on, that there might be specific things we need to do.
There is a specific component regarding community education and outreach. I could report back to you on that exact language. I don't have that in front of me. I do know it's on the, the city's website, under the DOJ component, but I would have to report back to you on the exact language that it says.
Okay. I do know there's education requirement. I, I thought you were indicating that there were, like, certain areas we have to hit or something like that, which my understanding was, was not. It was to educate essentially everyone we can.
Yeah, I don't believe it's that specific.
To me, I guess if I'm looking from even a higher level, at most, we're looking at, so it says six, you know, not to exceed 6,000 per month, so 3,000 at most, or no, 3,000 for Ms. Ramsey unless she goes over the amount of hours in here. But, no matter who she hires or what extra work she does, we're talking not to exceed 6,000 a month. We're going at just over two months, because we're keeping her for after the election, in case there were questions after the election of how votes were counted, things like that. Looking at 12 to 15,000 absolute maximum.
I think if she's free to hire anybody and everybody that she wants, and we have to pay for their travel and everything else to come in here and their hotel, it's going to get a lot more than that.
Well, no, but we, but in the recommended motion, though.
I'm, I'm sorry. One, I, for some reason, I, when I read this, I did not think that the people she hired were included in this contract. So, can we get clarif, clarification that the, if she hires five people, it'll come out of that $6,000 a month?
So, she would only be hiring one person, and it would be with my consent.
And would it be out of the $6,000 a month, or is this just?
Yes, yes. No, it's out of, out of this money. So, this is a maximum here.
Just one person?
Yes.
That contract doesn't say that.
And that, this person will be a local person, so there shouldn't be hotel expenses associated with him or her.
Okay.
So. I do understand that some of the thing, some of these things have already come to pass. If I were, there were two things that I, well, first, I thought it was a little unnecessary to create, I can't remember exactly where it was, but a method for tracking the progress of like an organization and keeping account on who they've reached out. I just didn't see the purpose on that. It just seemed like a lot of administration for I'm-not-sure-what reason, because I don't know what we would do with that data.
I don't plan on doing anything with that data. That's something that Grace felt was very important, and she's supposed to be kind of the public relations and voter education expert, so I was going to let her, her do that. But, you know, this is ultimately for public input, so if you guys want to specifically cross out a specific section or paragraph, I, I won't say no, of course.
I think it's useful engaging the success of the outreach of the consultant. I just don't think we benefit from that information, so I wouldn't want to be paying her to develop that program and, and work on it. And the candidate campaigns thing, I know that I've already talked to administration about this. Quite frankly, the one-on-one sessions with candidates, I thought was unwarranted before, because I think that our goal is to educate the voters on the new system and how to vote successfully and participate in our process.
Mm-hmm.
I do not think that city funds should be used to assist anyone in developing strategy. I think that's mixing the lines between using public funds for, for private campaigns. I would rather get rid of basically anything under candidate campaigns, because I don't, I don't think we need that. And I don't see, I, I do understand the concept of the people that are knocking doors because they're campaigning for themselves. You want them armed with the knowledge to relay that to residents, but I feel like we've already taken the steps to do that. I believe every candidate went to the candidate trainings. And I'm happy with literature being made, print materials being made available, but that, that should just be widespread available to anyone who wants to disseminate that.
Sure.
I have a little bit of a problem of creating posters to put in smart buses.
Uh, that was something that.
That becomes very expensive.
Creating, I mean, my understanding is this would just be like on a legal sheet of paper, where we're creating stuff that's very similar to what we'll be mailing out to all of the community. Our plan is to, to do a few direct mailers to every single household.
But we don't have a single smart bus that doesn't go into Detroit or Royal Oak or any other place.
Well, it's, it's impossible to find a bus system that's only in East Point, I think, unless you're just on the school bus.
Unless we just distributed the posters in the bus stops.
Bus stops might be something.
Right, instead of putting them on the bus.
But you know how long those are going to.
I, I see what you're saying. I apologize. Yeah, that should read "Bus Stops" in the buses. Yeah. I will, I will have that amended, absolutely.
And an online mock election?
So, that is a system that they have already developed. It's basically a mock election using the different food categories, hamburgers, salad, sausage, and one other thing. And then it goes about kind of displaying the results of, of how these specific results are tabulated, you know, using crossover.
So, that's on the city's Facebook page today. I got it five times in one hour.
Well, that's good.
I don't know, it didn't really.
That, that means it's working.
It didn't really make a lot of sense, because it doesn't, it says how you can vote, but it doesn't say how the vote's going to be tabulated.
So, we're, we're doing a series of Facebook announcements. We're trying to, right now, we're starting off by just talking about ranked choice voting, and as we progress, we will give more and more information to the general public.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, do we have any literature printed already?
Um, we actually do have some literature that has been developed. We have one or two, we actually have two different flyers. They are not officially printed, although I can give you a, a rough draft copy right after this meeting, if you'd like it.
Do you have any, or can you provide council with maybe just a idea of how much this has cost the city so far?
Um, you know, I would let, uh, maybe Randy wants to, to cover that one. We have been using kind of different GL numbers, and we are working to consolidate those all into one specific GL. Randy, do you want to touch on that a little bit?
Uh, the expectation is by the end of the week, the report will be out. We have gone through the accounts payable and identified some charges. We still have to go through staff time to identify that expense, but the expectation is by the end of the week, there will be a report on how much we have spent year-to-date.
And will you also include the legal fees?
Oh, yeah, that's, you know.
Okay. So, I guess we need a motion to approve this community voter education consultant.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the contract with Ms. Grace Ramsey to serve as the city of East Point's voter education consultant for the implementation of ranked choice voting for the November 5, 2019 general election, for an amount not to exceed $6,000 per month, and authorize the assistant city manager slash deputy city clerk to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
Should we put in there the, the changes?
Why, I was going to ask if there's any chance of getting an amendment to really just strike the provisions under candidate campaigns.
Just remove it.
Any other concerns I raised, I don't think need to result in changes in the contract. I really think things like the one-on-one strategy, strategy sessions are, I, that's the main area I was concerned with.
So, are you referring to B1 and 2? Because admittedly, I would still like to leave B4, the expectations memo, in there. I think that's very important for the candidates to know kind of what they can expect, when they can expect it, and who they can expect it from. So, I respectfully ask for that to be included. If you'd like me to delete it, I absolutely can.
I'd be fine with leaving 4, getting rid of 1 through 3. I'm not against the print materials, but I kind of just think they should be available for anyone who wants them, not just candidates.
Okay, perfect.
If, I mean, Mr. D'Amico's motion, it's up to him if he wants to make the amendment.
I guess the only question I have is that I think we did the one-on-one, I guess two of the four candidates did it, but then two of the four might, I think the question was just like, how, you know, how, it was just awkward to ask in front of people, but I don't think it's like.
I, I believe at the, the forum, all the candidates were asked whether or not they wanted to meet on one-on-one. I can say for myself, they asked, and I said I did not need to meet one-on-one with them. I have no idea who the other candidate was, but they did come up to me at that meeting and ask, so I'm assuming all four candidates were, were asked at that time.
All right, then. All right, get rid of, so, and 1 is the same thing. Well, we already did 1, yeah, was the training here. Right, yeah. So, okay, yeah, amend to get rid of B2 and 3, I guess, then, yeah. B2 and B3.
And, I mean, that, that'd be.
Well, 1's already completed, right, so.
So, Madam Mayor, the one-on-one strategy session, that was originally, they had left that in there, because they, they knew they had done the one-on-one session for two out of the four candidates, but they wanted to make sure they were still going to be available for the other two by phone call, if they still wanted to, to follow up on them, on it with a one-on-one session at a later date. She might contest this a little bit, just because she wants to be fair to all the candidates. So, I'm willing to take it out, but.
Well, they've already been given that opportunity, and they've turned it down.
Okay.
I just don't want to be, I don't want a candidate to be hassled either.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I'm, like I said, I was approached at that meeting, and all of the candidates were at that meeting. So, I'm assuming that at that time, the other candidates were asked, and I know that they publicly made that announcement at the meeting, that time slots were available for the one-on-one, so.
Okay.
So, if you, if you're amending your motion, is there still support for it?
Yeah.
And just to clarify again, removing B2 and B3 still done, right, is what we're saying? Or am I, or are you saying if I amend it again, to leave 2 in, now?
No, removing 2 and 3.
Okay.
Is what I was asking for.
Do you still support that, Councilwoman Owens?
So, what you were saying, Mr. Fairbrother, was that they wanted each individual candidate, hello, are you listening?
Yes.
Okay. They wanted each individual candidate to learn the process, not just for campaigning reasons, just if someone asks them a question, they can know, you know, how to, you know, train them or teach them.
So, they wanted to, one, make sure that all the candidates understood how the actual tabulation, and the round-by-round tabulation was going to be constructed, and they also wanted to make sure that each candidate knew how to properly campaign. So, they're not talking about how to advertise their campaign or all, kind of the traditional campaign techniques. They more wanted to focus on things like, okay, well, if you're going to vote for one candidate, for candidate A in the first position, you can also have, you know, vote for me as the second ranking, or in the third ranking, or the fourth ranking. So, you know, voting for, voting in a ranked choice election is a little bit different from voting in a plurality election, and they just wanted to make sure that each of the candidates kind of knew how to properly word what they were saying, so. It's a tricky situation. It truly is.
All right, well, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend again. Let's just leave 2 in for fairness. To me, I guess we'll see what happens here. And 3, I, I agree with Mayor Protem about if, if there's any print materials, just make it available to everybody, as opposed to just the candidates. So, just striking 3, I guess, is my motion, then. And then the minor change with the buses that Mr. Fairbrother mentioned.
Well, it really sounds as though if she's already signed it, we don't have any choice in what goes into the contract.
Oh, she could come back and sign again.
Yeah, she can, she can sign a revised copy. I don't see an issue with that.
I, I will respond. I, I think I'm probably going to lose this motion, but, because I, I think I'll vote no, because I, I really, when it happened, when we had the training, and it wasn't about what ranked choice was or how it works, it bled into, how do you lead a successful campaign? And then, and then on top of that, followed up with one-on-one strategy sessions for each individual person running for council. I just do not think it's appropriate to use city money to pay for someone as, to be a campaign consultant. I think it's wrong. So, I thought it was wrong when it happened the first time. Every candidate had the opportunity to sit down and meet with someone. Just because not every candidate took that opportunity, doesn't mean they didn't have all equal access to that. And going forward, I just don't want to see it continue to happen. And that's all. Sorry.
So, would you be satisfied if we just wrote one-on-one strategy sessions and then wrote it as completed, so that it was no longer ongoing? It's, it's already occurred, and we move forward from here?
I mean.
Right, it happened once, that's enough.
Yeah. I, I would, I would be very content with that.
If, if it was understood.
That wouldn't be my emotion, I guess.
Yeah, it's not up to.
I would say, I would just remove it at that point. But, okay, go ahead. You made a motion.
Sure. Guess we'll see how it goes. Right, because are you, or, yeah, Councilwoman Owens, you're still supporting that, or if not?
I support what you, you changed it like two or three times, so.
So, just getting rid of 3?
Just getting rid of 3.
B3.
B3.
And the buses changed that, Mr. Fairbrother.
And the buses, and why are we paying for faxes?
For faxes? What, what provision are you referring to?
Under 6.
Yeah, it was in one of the things.
Fax costs, who uses a fax?
I don't think, I don't think Grace has probably used a fax in 10 years.
This is probably a really old contract that she's just adapted to East Point.
It's probably just a list of, except we still have a fax.
Well, I can reassure you that minimal faxes will be used. I'm not going to say that no faxes will be used, but minimal faxes will be used.
Good, because they're a dollar sixty each for.
Maybe we can't just put some of that, because everybody checks their water bill. We couldn't put something enclosed in that to get people's attention a little bit more.
I, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
About the ranked choice voting. I know we're talking about putting posters everywhere, but everybody pays attention to their water bills. That has to go out anyway. And we can put a little note at the bottom to save some money.
Oh, oh, one of these, one of the mailers will be inside the water bills.
Okay.
In the October water bill. Yes.
Can I ask why she's on board until November 29th?
Um, the thought is, is that we may have some light media relations stuff, that she wants to have a, kind of a complete summary of everything that happens. And I tend to think that that's a good idea, especially since we're kind of, well, we are the first jurisdiction in the nation to use this multi-winner ranked choice voting system, specifically this universal tabulator. So, that was just a provision in the contract to kind of make it possible.
This is scary. Okay. So, we have a motion and support.
I don't think I heard support yet.
Yeah, I think, right, Councilwoman Owens, you supported it.
Ms. Owens did. I'll support it. With those changes.
I have Councilmember D'Amico and Owens as motioning and supporting.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilperson Lassito?
No.
And Councilperson Kleinfeld?
No.
Wait, the contract is already done, so you're saying no on the basis of, I thought we got rid of the candidate counseling.
I think we should have removed Section 2.
Yeah, the reason I voted no is...
I thought we did remove Section 2.
Yeah, no, my motion was just no B3, and the bus change, Mr. Fairbrother.
I'm a no.
Well, I...
So wait, if I remove...
I don't think we can go back and change that.
I thought that section had been removed.
Well, we had said that we were going to write that it was already completed, because we've already done the one-on-one strategy sessions, so I had...
Well, that's, well, that's not what I was motioning, though.
Oh, no, okay.
If one of, two, since the two got it, I was just saying if the other two wanted it, just to be fair, even at any point.
Could I ask to ensure that from Rich and Linda, that the motion was understood, and if Rich could advise on whether or not...
Because I thought, I thought you had changed the wording, so 2 would be excluded.
I had written down that we were going to write "completed," but ultimately, it would depend on what Mr. DeMonico decided to do.
The motion that Mr. Fairbrother had was completely different than the motion that Mr. DeMonico had made, and completely different than what Mrs. Mayor Pixley thought it was.
Yeah, I was only referring to the bus thing with Mr. Fairbrother.
Right, you never said anything about the completed part, is what I'm saying, so obviously the motion was not understood, is what I would believe.
Can I rescind my vote?
Why does somebody just make, do you want to make a motion to withdraw or rescind what was previously voted on, and then we can just start fresh?
No.
I don't really want to.
You're the maker of the motion.
I mean, I was in the minority on that. I'm okay with...
Leaving it as is?
Yes, because I, I understood the motion was change the bus thing, strike...
I agree, I did also, I did understand.
The Section 3.
Well, I asked Mr. DeMonico to clarify it after two or three times, and he did, and we talked about it, and then the motion went through, so, and support was given.
Well, and to be, if I am not mistaken, actually, I believe technically, the proper action would be to the people in the majority would have to bring a motion for reconsideration, which if Monique and Cardi do not want to do that, then...
They do not want to do that.
Then that's the...
It was the contract that was voted on.
So the partisans win one more time.
The voter education plan was actually something separate. Those are two different documents there. So, you had the voter education plan that Mr. Fairbrother was referring to, and then you also have the contract itself, which Ms. Ramsey has already signed, but again, if there's going to be a modification to that, before the city council wants to give approval to that particular contract that Ms. Ramsey's already signed, the council certainly was, had the prerogative to do that.
I guess I was just assuming it was all one document. I mean, I see that it says "contract," but I figured it's referencing it, I guess, but, so then...
So the motion to approve the contract is one thing, but the council still has the approval to modify the contract?
Voter education plan, yes.
Okay. Okay, Michael.
Okay.
You don't think that was implied by my, because we were discussing parts of it. I mean, right, I mean, we struck things from it, though.
I think it's a little messy to go backwards on this, honestly, because the contract has candidate education in it on page 2, referencing the one-on-one meetings as well. So it's mirrored in the plan we were talking about, but I think we all understood, because we take it out of the plan, but then it doesn't matter, because it's in the actual contract, if we were to separate them. I understood this as an approval of the contract with a modification to the attached plan.
And I really thought that the modification had been done, according to what Mr. Fairbrother had said, because that education of the candidates has already been completed on one time.
But also, in all reality, I think the same thing's gonna happen, because I don't think, it sounds like neither candidate is going to do it anyway, so, same exact...
All right, let's move on.
We're just hearing on a...
So just for point of clarity, so the contract has been approved by the council, and with regard to the voter education plan, item B3 has been removed.
Yes.
And that's what I will, I will let Ms. Ramsey know that tomorrow.
And just that minor bus change.
And of course, the bus change.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is item G, approval of the purchase of computers, monitors, Microsoft Office, and extended warranty.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I motion to piggyback off the state of Michigan MyDeal CDW-G contract for the purchase of 105 monitors, workstations, Microsoft Office licenses, and a four-year extended warranty for onsite Next Business Day support for a cause not to exceed $116,895.45. This project is $33,104.55 under budget.
Support that. Did Mr. Burdo want to say anything, since he's still here? I don't know if he wanted to point anything out. Okay. If no one does, that's fine, just throw it out there.
Move to support, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lassito?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Our next item is payroll and bills. I entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $14,40,159.44.
Support.
Move to support, please call the roll.
Councilperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilperson Lassito?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Move on to the second hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard at this time?
Yeah. Once again, Attorney Stephen Becker, I applaud the council for not going to the closed session. I'd like to know what statements that were made from the attorneys were inaccurate, Mr. Bloom, because you said in your statement, several statements were inaccurate. Other cities have this problem also with funding units. I don't know how you guys, if you guys know how court-appointed attorney works, they pay us regardless, whether you guys recover the money or not. So if I'm appearing at circuit court for probation violation, they're going to pay me $125. The court assesses that money to the defendant. Regardless if the city ever retrieves that money, regardless if it's covered by a fund, regardless if it's covered by a specialty court, I still get paid, because it's my work. It's just like you get a paycheck every week. I like to see you guys go two months without a paycheck. That's what we used to, and that's what we put up with, because we care about the city and we care about the indigent defense. Okay? The council, this council, your office wants to be transparent, and you have nothing to hide. Mr. Bloom refused to return phone calls from several of us councils regarding this. You guys didn't have enough guts to call us and tell us you were cutting our check. It's like Chevy Chase, expecting a bonus check and getting Jelly of the Month Club. The state, the court, I'm sorry, the, Mr. Bloom has told the court officials that you're up to date with all bills, MIDC, and regular appointments through 6:30. That's a blatant lie. I have over $4,000 the city owes me between the months of May and June still, outstanding. I've talked to every other attorney on that list, they have outstanding bills. That's fraud. The idea behind the MIDC was to provide quality representation to indigent defendants in your community, a majority of which are residents and some voters. At $80 an hour, on average, we average 20 arraignments a day. That comes out to $4 a file, $4 a defendant that you're getting us for. You're not going to get quality representation for $4 per defendant. So either you're gonna fail and get quality, fail to get quality representation for your defendants under this program, or you're gonna be, to fail to meet the requirements of this grant money. And that'll put you in violation of your contract. Majority of the council that takes these appointments from MIDC have a minimum of five years' experience. A majority of us have over 15 years. I personally have 20. Every other attorney in this room has at least 15. How are your residents gonna respond when they find out that the state money was given to you by a grant to give them what they deserve, quality representation, and you failed to do that? And studies show, go back and do your research, talk to Mr. Albright, the reason that the state came up with this money was that they proved through studies to show that representation at the arraignment purposes saves the city money from incarcerated people that should not be incarcerated. So you're actually saving money by having us there. If you didn't get this fund, or this money from the state, this free money from this grant, you'd be on the entire hook for the entire bill anyways. So if I'm there an hour and a half, and you're paying me $150 or $230 under the original $150 and $80, the state's paying half of that for you. So the city's actually saving money by, through this grant. Otherwise, you'd be on the hook for the full $230. Council mentioned earlier about the threat of a lawsuit. I guarantee you, ask Mr. Albright, I can be a big prick and a big asshole, and I'm not gonna mince words here. You think this is a threat? It's a promise. Then you can explain to each and every one of you, to explain to your taxpayers and your voters, why, to save $6,000 approximately, because that's about what it is, it's about $600 times about 10 attorneys that you screwed out of this money. So you're talking about $6,000, why it's gonna cost you a lot more than that to defend a lawsuit. And just to put this in perspective, at $80 an hour, on average, for 20 defendants, it's $4 an hour, or $4 per defendant. $150 for the same time, it's $7.50. You're talking about $3.50. Shame on each and every one of you, and shame on Mr. Bloom for lying.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thank you. I'll make sure you guys call your main law suit.
Christine Tillman, I'm gonna bring back some old-school contract law. The first contract is what's count, is what's in the first four corners. If you go and make another deal, doesn't mean a thing, doesn't mean a thing. Now, I heard what he said about the MIDC, sure, make all of that, fine, but you already signed one contract, that's kind of like bigamy. You get married under this contract, and, oh, well, next week, you're gonna do something, uh, 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 uh. So that's what I gotta say about it. And I'm just recalling it from my contract law that I studied for years, that Thomas M. Cooley, you gotta pay 'em. Don't matter, you know, what state said, maybe the state said, well, you can only give them $70 out of my money. Tell you what Lansing would have did, they would capture that money from some other line item, rather than get sued. That's what they would do. And, you know, it's kind of, capture means you're moving money from one place to another. Sometimes it's legal, sometimes it's not. But in your case, I think I'd be capturing some from somewhere, because you're gonna pay it anyway if they go to court, they definitely gonna win that one. Now, on, in the issue of ranked-style voting, I learned something about that today. On my way, I had to walk over here. Everybody was so nice. I said, where all the races at? Ain't that a racist, come... Everybody, oh, ma'am, what's wrong? I didn't know where I was going. They said, this, you go, this, it took me up north and it, and there was a city hall, and I didn't get beat up by nobody, and the dogs, they are so...
We have 30 seconds.
The dogs are so sophisticated, huh? They only got time for you, and most of them are sequestered. The ones who are not sequestered, they real hostile dogs. Ain't no such thing as what Ms. Owens be saying, and I wish Mr. Cardi B would understand dear, whatever, understand more, that racism ain't as bad as what y'all think it is. You just make up a whole lot of stuff in your head. That ain't true.
Again, my name is Marissa Calzar, I'm an attorney. Mr. Bloom, I am so happy that that citizen, if you could make eye contact with me, sir, thank you. I'm so happy that this citizen just explained to you contract law. In fact, that's exactly what it is, and she's brilliant. And I hope that you take the time after this meeting to speak with Mr. Albright, as he would be your councilman, I hope he educates you on the law. The contract that we made is signed by Judge Carl Gerds, and you ordered, and his order is what you paid us based on, and then you went against the court order, and three months later deducted money from our checks. And I noticed that you nodded your head. And I would also like to applaud you, sir, by admitting on record and before the camera that you're going to refuse to pay us. That was an interesting statement. Thank you for admitting that. I also think that you should be embarrassed that a lawsuit will be brought against the city due to your incompetence.
Good evening, my name is Ibrahim Neviri. I am the owner of the American Cleaning Company. We used to service the city over here, up until August 30th. For some reasons, I would say probably like two, last two years of our contract, the city started to cut our paycheck, and that's the main reason why we are here today. There's no explanation why the city did not pay the full monthly rent that we had initially agreed on the contract.
Sir, we cut your what, sorry? Cut what in the contract? Yeah, I think I just missed part I didn't want...
Yeah, what I was saying is that the city, based on the contract that we have signed with the city, we're supposed to get a full monthly check. That check was never full in the last two years, and we don't understand the reason why. And we've been, right now, we're talking to Brian, but obviously, he's new in this position and probably doesn't have that much information, how the city processes the payment for the vendors. However, I'm here just to address this to you guys, and to make sure that we were the one that pulled ourselves out of this cleaning contract with you, just because that you failed to do the payments on time, full payments on time, on monthly basis.
You have 30 seconds.
And that's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, again, I'm Dana Frears. I'm not gonna be as fired up as Mr. Becker and Ms. Calzar, because I'm tired. It's been a long day. We work long, hard hours for what we do. Court-appointed attorneys are not compensated anywhere near close to what we are worth. I understand what Mr. Bloom is saying, and he is correct in one aspect. When the grant was originally applied for, $80 an hour was approved by the state. I understand that. I'm sorry that the rate was increased to $150. Not really, because that's actually more, a bit more accurate, what we should be paid. I'm actually doing arraignments in East Point tomorrow. I have 22 arraignments, and I'll be making $80 an hour, and I try to get done as quickly as possible, so that I don't cost the city too much money. So if I do those 22 arraignments in an hour, where there's a good chance that I will, I will be making $4 a file, which is a joke. That's less than minimum wage. So I'll say this to you. The state may not reimburse you for what you owe us, but you owe it to us, and I hope that the council does what is right and pays us what is owed. I'd like you to take a minute and think about if $600 was cut out of your paycheck. How would you feel?
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, the second hearing of the public is closed. Move on to mayor and council reports. Let's start with Mr. Kleinfeld.
Madam Mayor, I feel like we need to discuss this right now. I mean, I need, or, you know, it's up to you, of course, but I feel like we should be just, well, so, one quick thing I want to say, I misunderstood our attorney, I was wrong about the closed session, was not a legitimate reason. I just wanted to understand all the pieces. I didn't, because we got some information just very recently, and I just wanted... recently, and I just wanted to make sure-
Well, I think-
-it's understanding.
Go ahead and put it in your remarks right now.
Okay. I mean, so I don't think we've done this before, but I'd like to motion to pay this out of just our, I guess it's gotta be out of the general fund, because it wouldn't be out of the MIDC funds to make this right. Sounds like there's some sort of issue between the court and the city, but at this point, I don't care if I'm understanding just everything right now. Might be a couple details I don't get, but clearly, there's an expectation, we were paying the $150 per hour for that first hour, not 80. And we should be paying that. If it's not out of the grant money, I guess at this point, I don't personally care. So I would just motion to authorize the city to pay that amount. Sounds like it's roughly $6,000.
Mr. DeMonico, if you don't mind, I guess my confusion was, is I wanted to get clarification from Mr. Albright on whether or not legally, we would be allowed to with the, the grant, with the grant that we have received, because the way Mr. Bloom explained it, and the way I understood it, is that we were not allowed to pay them the difference. But if we are, I would definitely, yes, agree that we, I would like to pay them the difference, or try and develop some sort of strategy to make sure that these people can be reimbursed. But like I said, if we're, we, even if we have to use city funds, I am fine with paying them the difference, because you're right, they were under a contract for that rate, if we can.
We cannot spend MIDC money to pay that.
Okay.
You can spend general fund money with the understanding that the court administrator, without permission, increased it to 150 an hour, when she's the one that set the budget at $80 an hour, and knew that when she put the form together.
But that funding would come out of the court budget, would it?
And the court doesn't have budget. That was the other issue, is the judge can spend whatever he wants within budget. He doesn't have budget to spend it. So you, counsel could approve paying it out of non-court general fund money.
But the bottom line is, we don't have the figures in order to know exactly what it's gonna be. And I think that has to be brought forward at the next council.
I, I think that needs to be brought forward. And the other thing is too, is that I would like to see the contract that they had with the court, because if the court did sign a contract with these attorneys for this rate, it should come out of the court budget. I mean, always, this is not, this is not us, this is against the court.
And this is something that none of us knew about, except Dana approached me at an open house, at the American House, what, a week and a half ago, 10 days ago.
So this is, yesterday was the first day.
And I came, I came back and talked to the, the finance director to find out what the problem was. And it took him a while to go through and find out exactly where the problem was. So it's nothing that we've known, that we didn't try to fix before, is something that we just found out about. Because we don't sit over there in the court and know everything that's going on. So if it hadn't been for Dana coming and talking to me, I wouldn't have known about it. And that, and I notified you that the city manager was gonna be meeting with you, and the finance director. So it's not that we have not taken steps to find out what's going on, and what we can do to fix the problem. So please, I don't think that at this time, when it's mayor and council reports, I don't think this is the time to come up with a, a motion that we can resolve this issue at this time. I think you need to gather more information, and, and also the city attorney's information, and then come back at the next council meeting.
Why don't we just call a special meeting, then?
We can call a special meeting, whatever. So, it's your remark time.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah, I guess, I, I think it's, yeah, as long as we get this information as soon as possible after this meeting, because it sounds like we're not gonna, everyone's not gonna get their questions answered tonight. Need a minute to read it, so that's fine.
But there was an email that was sent out yesterday-
Yes.
-explaining it, but it just came yesterday.
Sure, we, yeah.
So it's not that this council is not doing anything, Mr. Becker.
Your finance director, you, two weeks ago.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
Okay, so-
All right, let's move on. Ms. Owens?
We can talk after, sir, but, um, okay, so we'll do that soon. Well, I just said, or, you wanted me to do my update, too?
Yes.
All right, I'll, uh- Sure. No, we, we do need to, of course, address his, this, much newer, well, newer to me. We'll, I'll be at-
Please.
Just-
You had your chance at the hearing of the public. You can come forward, you can talk to counsel afterwards, you can talk to Mr. Fairbrother, and you can talk to him. We are down at the point where it's mayor and council reports, and Mr. DeMonico has the floor.
If anyone wants to stick around and talk after, I'd be happy to. And then, so also, we had our Roxanna Park grand opening recently. There's very nice playplace at Roxanna Park, if anyone's been down there, just north of Nine Mile. Check it out if you weren't there. A ton of kids came, had all kinds of fun. It was really nice. Also, some good news, my great friends and East Point residents, Mark and Caitlin, just got married on the 14th here. We went backpacking in the Manistee National Forest, which was a very unique and fun wedding. So congratulations to them. And like to thank Mary Hall Rayford, who's in the audience, for hosting a block captain meeting for the Neighborhood Watch. Appreciate that. And everyone, tomorrow at 7:00 PM, come check out all your city council and mayoral candidates at the 8K homeowners meeting, and then the following week again, at 7:00 PM at the high school. Pleasant View for tomorrow, high school next week. There's another forum at 7:00 PM. Excited for the State Board of Canvassers meeting for ranked choice. Sorry, there are, there's a good, good amount of things going on in East Point here. Hoping to make it, because I'll be in Lansing on Thursday. Everyone else, continue to check out ranked choice voting since you're all here. Tell all your neighbors about it. We need everyone to know about this, so it's a successful election. We'd, of course, like it to be successful. And, yeah, really, that's, that's it for that. Come out Friday for the rotary wine tasting, 5 to 8:00 PM at Drew's Garden. And then Shamrock Day the next day, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Children's Garden, which is right next to East Point Community Credit Union. It's right there. You'll see a big sign on the Grashit side that says Children's Garden. And, that, well, and wait, nope. And today's Constitution Day, everyone. Reread the, you know, check out the Constitution. It has been a hot topic today, so everyone make sure that you do that. And thank you to the gentlemen from Vietnam Vets for doing what you do, Mr. Laland, who's everyone knows here on the Planning Commission. I know he takes part in your ceremony. And I hope I covered everything. Thank you all for coming out and letting the council know your feelings. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanna thank everybody for coming out. I wanna apologize to the lawyers. They work so hard, and, you have to let me finish. Apologize if we did something wrong on our end. That's why me and Mr. DeMonico wanted to go back to figure out what was, what was done wrong. And so, we just got the information. Being, having the background in law enforcement, and all of us being public, you know, servants, we all don't get as much as we think we should, but we do it because we love the job. And it's a lot of people that have gotten out of, you know, crimes and things like that because of you. So I wanna say thank you. And we will get this fixed, and figure out what happened. And if, if there is a way we can pay you, trust me, that's what we're gonna do. You can put that on record, too. Also, the veterans that came out, my grandfather was a veteran, so thank you for coming out and letting us know about that information. Hopefully, I can make it. And also, I wanna give a happy birthday to my dau, my twin daughters. They asked me to do it. I did it last year, to give them a shout out. They asked me to do it this year. So Cameron and Caitlin will be 11 years old on the 24th, on the Tuesday. And so, they asked me to do it. So happy birthday to my, my beautiful daughters. They just won their second game of the year at St. Peter's, 24 to 9. So they're amazing kids, so I thank God for them. And, um, every, again, everybody who came out, and also, I wanna address the, the janitorial services. You guys did a good job. I don't know what happened. And so, that's why counsel is here, to find out what happens, and we address it appropriately, and try to get everybody paid, because people do have to eat and feed their families. So we, as a whole council, we understand it wholeheartedly. Please understand that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kleinfeld?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. DeMonico said this, and I just wanna repeat that Shamrock Day is on Saturday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM for all ages. The 21st, that's Saturday, correct?
Right.
Yes, okay, thank you. And they'll have games, and, and some chalk art, yarn, weaving, and other things for kids. And that's at the Children's Garden on Grashit. And also, the Arts Commission is accepting submissions for the art show that they will have on... I have the wrong dates down here. I know that's not correct, so I'm not gonna say it. Anyway, the, I know the submissions are open until the 27th of this month, and you can go on the East Point's website and submit pieces of art with your information. I believe you have to be over 18 and a resident, or an employee of East Point or Roseville. And I'll announce the dates of the actual art show at the next meeting. The attorneys that came today, I, we did not know this was an issue. And I do wanna respond to a couple of things. I know that you're smiling, and I know that you clearly have had communications with administration, but this is not something that counsel has addressed, and, or knew about. So some of the comments about the city being greedy, or related to that, I want to be clear, when it comes to dispensing the funds for the court, we're just the vehicle. We're not using MIDC funds in putting them into our general fund, and holding on to them. That's not what's going on. I do think there's an issue between the court and the city. I get the impression that you think that the confusion or communication issues solely fall, fall on the city, and I think that's probably an unfair characterization, because the city and the court have to work together to make sure they have clear parameters for the attorneys that are working for them, and for us to, to pay them out. And we all have to all be on the same page. I'm not against paying what was agreed to, or what was prob, I, I wanna find out more about it. I think without having the bills in front of us, I believe everything that everyone came up and said. I even recognize a couple of you from Third Circuit Court, because I worked on it Frank Murphy, so I've seen a few of you before. I believe what you're representing to counsel is absolutely true, but voting to just approve bills when we have no bills in front of us, and we have no idea how much it is, wouldn't make any sense, because otherwise, any group of people could come up and yell, "You owe us money," and then we'd say, "All right, give them money." So I think at the next meeting, once we have that information, hopefully, we can resolve it. I, as Ms. Lucido said, I, I wanna know what the agreement was that was given to the defense attorneys, because I, I have no idea what that was. I have no idea how that came about. And internally, that's something we have to fix. Certainly, you deserve to get paid for the work that you do. And I'm also very aware that defense attorneys, court-appointed defense attorneys, are grossly underpaid. And that Michigan ranks quite low in that category, and we're trying to fix that. So I just wanted to respond to that. Hopefully, by next meeting, we'll have all the information, and can just get this all squared away, and everyone taken care of. And that is all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lucido?
First of all, I would like to thank everyone that was involved in the new park at Roxanna Park, the new playground equipment. It looks fantastic. The kids are extremely excited, and it's been very well-used. Mr. Marucci did a great job with the grand opening ceremony, and it was really nice to see all the kids running out there, and getting so excited about having this new neighborhood park in their city. Also, I would like to take a moment to remind everyone, as Mr. DeMonico said, that tomorrow 8K is hosting their Meet the Candidate Night at Pleasant View Elementary School at 7:00 PM. I encourage everyone to come out, meet the new candidates that are running, and the candidates that are running for reelection. If you have any questions, you'll just sit down and, you know, talk to them, and ask them questions at that time. And also, next Wednesday at the high school, the League of Women Voters, along with the Chamber of Commerce, are hosting another Meet the Candidate Forum, where you'll actually be able to ask public questions at that one, to the candidates. Also, when it comes to the American Cleaning Company, I can't respond because I, I need to get more information. I'm not aware of the situation right now, and I will look into it, but you're gonna have to give me a little bit of time. But if you leave me your contact information, or leave it with Mrs. Slince, I will try to follow up with you. And then, when it comes to the attorneys, this is very new to us. We did receive an email yesterday, and to be honest, I did not even fully read the email yesterday. I was preparing for this meeting, and I tried to read as much as I could, but it's very hard when you have a lot to do in such a short period of time, because we don't get our agendas until Friday. With that said, I do wanna get more information on this. I do think that if you guys had a contract, you deserve to be paid. I totally agree with that. And you just have to give us just a little bit more time, and hopefully we can come to a resolution. And that's all I have for this evening.
So I wanna first address the MIA, the POW MIA. This is, hits my heart big time. My husband was a Vietnam vet, as you well know. And when we were stationed at KI Sawyer, there were many people that were left flying out on B-52s, or KC-135s, or fighters, that never came back. Many of those were our friends. And I've always been a big supporter of the Vietnam vets. I'm actually an associate member. So I'm gonna try to get to the event over at Resurrection next week. And I thank you for supporting it, and I know Leo Laland is a really big supporter. We have many, many East Pointers that are very involved with both Chapter 9, as well as 154. It's a great group. Thank you for coming forward, and thank you for doing this. I wanna also comment about the park. I thought the park was one of the best things that we've done. It was really exciting to, it seemed like we were opening the gates, and just letting the deluge come in. There were just so many kids. They were so excited, and it was really, really nice. And it was so nice to see something happening at that park, because forever, it's just sat there with nothing going on. So it was nice that we finally had a little bit of money that we could put into that. And thank you to the county, because, you know, a lot of it was our CDBG funds, and without that, we still would not have been able to do that. So that was really good. As I mentioned in some comments, we're not aware of what you're getting paid as an attorney over there, and if it hadn't been for Dana at an American House, Open House, I think most of the council would not have been aware. So I came back right after that, talked to Mr. Bloom, and then he gathered some more information. I asked him to be sure and inform counsel of everything that we could find out, and he did that as of yesterday. I read, wait, I read the email today. I was driving home from Hubbard Lake. I read the email in the rest stop, and that was the first time I knew what it was about. So I'm sorry if I didn't have a full reaction in your money sitting here, ready to pay you, but we need a little bit more information before we can go out and do that. And for you-
Sir, it's not your time to talk.
For you, I'm sorry, but we weren't informed. We didn't know anything about your contract, and as Sarah says, she will follow up on it. I just have one other comment. The comments about our salaries. Do any of you really know what our salary is?
No idea.
Our salary is-
You know my salaries?
Ours, no, our salary, Mr. Lubick is the, or, is the only one that knows. Two people back there sit on the-
Planning Commission.
No, not on the Planning Commission, but on the Electoral Officials Compensation Board. And they know exactly what we get, and I saw you both laughing, because the salary that we get per month is probably what most of you would make in a very short period of time. So I don't have anything else to say, or entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
You wanna state what it's about, please?
For attorney-client privilege communication regarding contract negotiation.
It's regarding contract negotiation.
Not MIDC stuff, not.
All right. We have a motion, we have support.
Support.
Please call the rule.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Go into closed session at 9:12.